Calling the meeting to order, welcome to the May 20, May 20th, 2025 City Council Meeting. I hereby call the meeting to order. Members of the public may attend the City Council Meeting in person or may watch or listen remotely by viewing the meeting on Channel 8, WCTV, and the city's website at Public comment during the public forum and/or public hearing portions of the meeting may be provided in person, at the meeting in advance, or by logging into the Teams call and raising your hand during the public hearing. When your name is called in that meeting, you will be seen and heard in our council chambers and on the cable channel. You'll be asked to unmute, and then you may begin your comments. All public comments must include your full name and address. Next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If we would all stand if you're able and follow along.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is roll call, and let the record reflect that all council members are present this evening. I will make a note that earlier this evening, the council participated in a workshop and discussed the following: Discussion of our long-term staffing plan, review and discussion of a draft city operations resilience plan, and a discussion of requests to amend Chapter 936 tree preservation code relating to use for institutional landholders. With that, the next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I would need a motion to approve the agenda as presented, or would anyone like to make any changes? Hearing no changes, I would accept a motion to approve the agenda as written.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Were there discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes. The next item is our public forum, and we actually have several speakers tonight. Just to remind you that members of the public in attendance tonight, if you're interested in speaking, there's forums at the back table there. You can fill that out and indicate if you're representing a group and limit your comments to three minutes. If it's on the agenda, then if you're on Teams, you can raise your hand. So we're going to have several presentations in this forum. The first item is a presentation of the Exceptional Service Award. And is that to the Wazetta West Chamber, or to staff, or who's going to lead us? Mr. Dahl?
Maybe it was an omen that this mic wasn't assigned. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, Chamber President Becky Pearson and Sarah Kelber, Chamber member, is going to introduce this award.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members, ladies and gentlemen.
Can you hold on one second? I don't think that mic's on.
Another omen?
No, we're good.
Trust me, this is what I'm excited enough about, I could shout it from the rooftops. First and foremost, sorry, Sarah Kelber, Business and Estate Advisors, 282 East Wazetta Boulevard.
I don't think it's still on. I don't think it's on.
I don't think it's on.
Maybe that will...
There you go. Start over, because people on our vast viewing audience...
Vast viewing audience, absolutely, not a problem. Thank you, Mayor, council members. Ladies and gentlemen, Sarah Kelber, Business and Estate Advisors, 282 East Wazetta Boulevard. Thank you so much for allowing us time during the public forum. Believe it or not, the council has been doing this for, oh, about 15 years, as Business and Estate Advisors has partnered with the Wazetta West Metro Chamber to recognize exceptional service delivered by its members to the local consumers. Now, as we reviewed this most recent nomination, there were a number of us on the nominating committee that said, surely they've won before. And surprisingly, they had not. But I will tell you, it is my great honor to recognize Terry and Annalise and Gianni's as this Exceptional Service Award winner for May 2025. I'll tell you, it is the crown jewel of Lake Street, and anything there, whether you're a happy hour in the bar, out for a special occasion, needing something at One Door West for an event center, or even just an average, everyday dinner. Well, there's no average, everyday dinner at Gianni's, it always feels very special. So we'd like to recognize you and thank you for providing exceptional service to the patrons of the restaurant. Please come up if you'd like to say a few words, Terry and Annalise.
Thank you. Here, honey. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, esteemed council members and city staff. On behalf of my staff and our dedicated employees, I want to extend our heartfelt gratitude for recognizing us with this Exceptional Service Award. This honor reflects hard work, commitment of our entire team. It reinforces our passion for serving our community, and thank you for your support and encouragement. We look forward to continuing our partnership and striving for excellence in all we do from here forward. Soon, we will be celebrating our 30th anniversary in Business and Wazetta, and I couldn't be more proud. I believe Gianni's is a very important part of the fabric of this community. I live here, own a business here, participate in our community, and couldn't be happier to do that. We're genuinely honored. As I've often said, I use my words as political capital, so I try to keep everything, I use them judiciously and fiscally, so thank you very much for your time, and I can't tell you how honored we are to receive this award. And this is my daughter, Annalise.
Annalise.
Thank you very much.
Before we just pause for pictures, anyone up here want to offer any comments?
I would.
Go ahead, Mr. Parko.
Well, I think exceptional service is wonderful, but I might like to add that you not only have exceptional service, you have exceptional ambiance, you have an exceptional patio, you have exceptional food, and you are an exceptional businesswoman. So, very proud to know you, and it's, I'm very glad that you got this award.
Thank you.
Mr. Plakish?
Oh, Chad, we've known each other for years. I will add exceptional wine list, too, to that list over there, which I've participated in at times. Now, the first thing that came to my mind is that you were the crown jewel. I was hesitant to think to say that until Ms. Kelber said it, for fear of maybe insulting some of the other great restaurants we have in town. But truly, you are the crown jewel of Lake Street and Wazetta. That if you're doing anything for any purpose, any grand purpose, Gianni's is the place to go. So very happy to see you here tonight.
Anyone else?
I, too, just want to thank Terry and her team, who is also exceptional, her staff and family. So we really appreciate you and love being neighbors with you. So thanks for all the service you give this community and then this wonderful business you have.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Terry. I mean, you clearly have a unique and special place, and what struck me when I got to spend some time here is just knowing how involved you've been in the community and how passionate you are about it. And it just goes to show kind of who you are as a person, and we're very glad that you're here and a part of us, and I would say you have a great place also. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
I think it was well said. I affectionately call you the grandam of Wazetta, and you are, and everything you touch turns to gold, Ms. Hummel Fox, and thank you for operating such a great business and living in our community as well.
Thank you. I'm very honored. Thank you all, and city staff, you're great. My esteemed council members, Mr. Schelzel. Thank you so much, you guys.
We'll just pause for a second till I take some pictures, and then we'll move on to the next agenda. Sure, sure, sure. I was going to wear a suit.
Thank you.
Okay, the two of us are on. Can we go home? No. Okay, sorry.
Gianni's.
Gianni's, yeah, that'd be a good place to watch the game. The next item on our public forum is an update on the Lake Minnetonka Conservation District, and for that, we've invited Matt Thompson, who's our Wazetta representative. Mr. City Manager, anything you'd like to offer to tee this up?
Mr. Mayor, no.
Okay. So at least once a year, we ask our LMCD rep just to brief the council on the activities at LMCD. Mr. Thompson?
Counsel, thank you for having me tonight and allowing me to be your representative for the city of Wazetta. In brief, just as a reminder, the LMCD exists as a coordinating body for 14 different cities, two counties, and many state and local governing agencies to protect, preserve, and enhance Lake Minnetonka. In practice, fundamentally, that means we're attempting to maintain equality across the lake, particularly in enforcement, safety, structures, and activities for all users. In particular, updates for the city of Wazetta, some recent items. Wazetta Yacht Club has not submitted its MDL application for the changes recently presented to the council. We're still awaiting that.
What's MDL, Matt?
The multiple dock license.
Thank you.
Changes that they had come for comment on. Locust Hills HOA in Gray's Bay recently approved, or received a variance approval on May 14th for its dock extension, getting things out to navigable water for those residents. And Wazetta City Docks, unfortunately, the application was denied on May 14th. In general, the LMCD board was reluctant to issue a new multiple dock license until the current approved structures are complete and compliant. And of note to this council, the LMCD staff did not issue a recommendation, which is atypical for proposals. And that generally means that this is something of a new precedent or use on the lake, so it's generally having more consideration or conversation from the board members. Also of note, the Tonka boat rentals could successfully operate this summer in those transient slips. It would just have to be without reclassification and no storage overnight of that equipment, but it is still a possibility for this summer in the current condition. Outside of those dock and code issues there, public safety and water patrol funding. Typically, the LMCD has requested full-time coverage by a deputy. That's occurred since 2020 Memorial Day through Labor Day at a cost of $90,000, which was covered through donations to Save the Lake Fund. That's been renegotiated with Hennepin County, and they've accepted full financial responsibility for that beginning of the 2026 budget year. Also on the radar for council is an increase in the levy request by the LMCD. Annual increases were suspended for the 2023 through 2025 calendar year for spending down of the reserves to the auditor recommended 35% fund balance for the LMCD. This means a $12,000 levy increase for the coming budget cycle, which is significant, but reduced thankfully due to that water patrol funding coverage. Cities are requested to comment or respond to the LMCD letter and information packet along with its budget forecast by June 4th, and we'd appreciate your comments on around that. Outside of that, upcoming and future issues I see on the horizon, we've already seen some feedback coming in about the carp fishing, lighting issues over the night, coming up on video with the new test program, continuing to monitor that, and looking forward to directing that to make sure everybody's best taken care of. We also see likely new conversations around wake boats. Current regulations are tough to enforce, and we're also seeing new science studies about lake bottoms. Lastly, we have new potential aquatic invasive species funding changes happening at a state and county level. Aquatic invasive species are those species that don't belong in our lake that make very big changes to our lake, and unfortunately, we're looking at some changes around how those projects are funded. Currently, the LMCD doesn't designate any of its budget to those projects, although it does help direct those, and it is a major portion of what we consider the protection of our lake. So something we've made sure we're involved with the process on going forward. With that, I take any questions from the council that I could hope to answer or track down new information for.
Thank you for that update, Mr. Thompson. Questions of council, Mr. Thompson? Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, and this may be a question for staff, but on the dock issue, like what's, what are the next steps in the process and the timing associated with that?
Councilmember Sorenson, Mr. Mayor, from our perspective, we need to meet with LMCD staff. I think there's a disconnect in our understanding of the current dock status and their understanding, so we've scheduled that, I think, for next week, actually, because we don't believe that we're out of compliance, but we'll connect and make sure that we're all on the same page and do whatever we need to do to be in compliance.
Other questions of Mr. Thompson? I have one, Matt. This is more understanding. So the issue with funding water patrol, was that a coverage issue, a budget issue, or both? And then is the net outcome the same level of service or reduced service?
Great question, Andy. So during the 2020 summer of busyness and COVID, we added increased coverage during that time without a true budget solution. At that time, the designated arm, that Save the Lake Foundation, of the LMCD fundraised to cover that increased coverage, and over the last couple of years, LMCD has tried to determine if that's something that our cities and our residents would enjoy retaining. And in this case, it was a struggle between how to not increase the levy and make sure that that coverage retained. So fortunately, Hennepin County will be taking that on. So at this time, I would say not part of the budget, but to make sure it did not get put into the budget approached Hennepin County.
And so no change in service, same level of service?
Same level of service, be a deputy on duty at all times, 24 hours, through that Memorial Day through Labor Day period.
Right. That was the outcome I had hoped, so thank you for that. Any other questions of Mr. Thompson? Thank you for your service, Matt. You know, I know it's, in addition to your day job, you know, like all of us, you're adding more time, and thank you for your service, and thank you for representing us at the LMCD. I'm sure you're doing a great job just by your handle on all the issues, so thank you.
Appreciate you and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. City Manager, is there anyone on Teams that would like to speak?
Mr. Mayor, there is not.
Okay, so we'll move on to number six, new agenda items. Does anyone have any new agenda items that they would like to bring up for future council meetings? Okay, hearing none, I'd move on to the consent agenda. So I'll read the items on the agenda. For consent, approval of City Council Workshop and Regular Meeting Minutes of May 6th, approval of the check register, approval of municipal licenses, receipt of the police activity report, receipt of the building activity report, approval of the amended liquor premise, no, license premise for double black diamond ink doing business at Red Cow at 881 Lake Street East, approval of a professional services agreement with VSI, professional sound services, and letters of agreement with artists for Sunday Music in the Park series, approval of the contract with Creekside Lawn and Landscape for Heritage Park planting, approval of the second reading and adoption of ordinance 849 amending the official zoning map of the city of Wazetta at 200 Lake Street East, approval of the professional services agreement with Home Run Leadership for Strategic Facilitation Planning Services for city leadership, approval of the professional services agreement with Mohegan Hansen Architectural Group for Wazetta Bar and Grill Interior Remodel Project. Ooh, a lot of things. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, to interrupt. Just for clarification purposes, it wasn't very clear in the motion for the Mohegan Hansen professional services agreement, but just to add, the approval would be based on staff recommendations to omit the patio planning for now.
Okay, so let me see, let me restate that. So what you're saying is that the way I read it needs further clarification that the patio remodel is not in scope for what is presented?
Exactly.
Okay. So with that additional piece of information, are any items required to be pulled, or are we comfortable as is? Okay, so I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So that passes. We now move on along to the public hearing. There's no public hearing items today, so we move on to, is that correct, Mr. Dahl?
That is correct, yep.
Okay, now we move on to new business, and we are going to hear a presentation about the city's 2024 audit financial reports. I'm guessing this is over to Ms. Jaeger and also our outside advisors?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. So as you may know, every year, we're required to have an audit of our financials. The city has retained LB Carlson, which is formerly MMKR, the auditing firm that we've been working with for a number of years, to conduct that audit. So I have Bill Lauer here, who will give a presentation, which is a high-level overview of our 2024 financials, report on any findings. But before I turn it over to Bill, I did just want to acknowledge and recognize the hard work of our accountant, Erin St. Seer. She helped out a lot this audit despite being new, to help me out so we could get the auditors what they need, and a lot of her day-to-day work on making sure the bills get paid, processing payroll, really builds into the work that goes into this audit. So I just wanted to recognize her efforts and then turn it over to Bill for the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. What I'm going to do this evening is try to get through three things with you quickly here. First of all, just to make sure that you understand the responsibility of the city regarding the financial statements and how that differs from our role as auditor. Secondly, I'm going to go through the opinions and the report letters that we issued as a result of our audit.
Mr. Dahl, could you just pull up the microphone just so the people in, there you go. There you go.
Better?
Yes.
Okay. And then, thirdly, I will just briefly touch on a few of the financial highlights for the 2024 fiscal year under audit. First of all, as far as our role is concerned, I need to make sure that you understand, as a body charged with oversight of the city's financial reporting process, that all of the data, the disclosures that go into the financial statements and the statements themselves is a responsibility of the city. What we do is come out and perform our audit process to provide the opinion that goes in that document, as pointing as to whether it fairly presents the city's financial position and the results for the year under audit. Because the city's audit is performed in accordance with government auditing standards, we also issue a report letter with regard to your internal control and compliance over financial reporting. And finally, the city is subject to an audit of your compliance with Minnesota laws and regulations. The State Auditor's Office puts out an annual audit guide that we audit to, and basically all local governments are subject to that same thing. As far as the results of the audit process, once again, we issued what we refer to as an unqualified, or I'm sorry, unmodified or clean opinion on your financial statements. There is a reporting change this year that we called out in that opinion. There's another new, everyone's favorite, another new governmental accounting standard that had to be implemented this year. This one had to do with compensated absences. Essentially, the big change here is with regard to the accrual of unused employee sick leave. Basically, what this new statement did is kind of square that up with how most places were accruing vacation and PTO. Sick leave under the old guidance was not being accrued the same way, and this kind of made it all kind of on an even playing field. As a result of this change, you'll see a restatement of your beginning net position of about $654,000. This is kind of the liability estimate as of the beginning of this fiscal year, so the total amount of that estimated change goes into the beginning net position, and then the current year should just be the change from during the actual year of 2024. As far as internal control and compliance, it was a very clean audit. We had nothing to report other than the statement that we've made for a number of years we've been auditing the city, and that is you do have limited segregation of duties in some areas. It was a little bit, there were some of the processes that you have in place and were segregated a little more because of a retirement that you had during the year and that accountant position being open for part of the year. Some of the mitigating controls were kind of centralized in one person for part of the year, but you've now filled that position and should be kind of back to the way you've been running. And as far as Minnesota legal compliance, we had nothing in our testing to report as far as findings there. In fact, one of the things we also do is report on any findings from the prior year. In 2023, we noted you had a claim that was paid in a longer timeframe than the 35 days from the receipt of goods or services or the invoice for goods or services that the statute allows. We tested that again this year, and we found no similar finding for 2024. So before I move along to some of the financial information, that's kind of everything I had to cover as far as reports, findings, and that along those lines. Are there any questions before I move on?
Questions?
I have one, quickly.
Go ahead, Mr. Parko.
So my understanding is with the new, the new code, the new GAAP code 101, I think it was, for compensated absences, we have a reduced liability of $654,000?
No, no, your liability is higher, your net position, your equity was lowered because of that change.
Gotcha.
Essentially, you're accruing a bigger number for your unused sick leave.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like it usually works that way, so good. That's what I assumed it was.
Okay. Other questions at this stage of the presentation? Okay, please proceed.
All right. First thing I'll do then is take a look at your governmental fund, changes in fund balances. So the city maintains two fund types. Governmental funds are your general, special revenue, debt service, capital project funds. These are on a modified accrual basis, so they report only current assets, current liabilities, your property tax levy finances, these governmental activities. This shows the total fund balance change in those funds during the 2024 fiscal year. At the end of 2024, you had fund balances of about $14.5 million. That was a decrease of about $729,000 from the year before. The top part of this presentation shows kind of the different components of fund balances that are reported. Non-spendable fund balances of about $22,000 is basically prepaid expenditures. Restricted fund balances are fund balances that are subject to restrictions from outside of the city, so kind of beyond your control. That was about $1.65 million at the end of the year, and that was a decrease of about $1.1 million from the year before. And the big change there is you had funds in your lakefront improvement fund that were restricted for that project, and as you were wrapping most of that up in 2024, you spent those fund balances down. Then the rest of the fund balances are things that you control at the city level. Committed fund balances are things that you've committed at the highest level, so basically by board resolution or policy. Most of that $291,000 relates to funds that are sitting in your special revenue funds from specific revenue sources. Assigned fund balances is a little bit lesser level of internal commitment. Basically, you earmarked about $7.9 million for various purposes. Most of those assignments are for capital purposes, street improvements, capital equipment, parks and trails. You spent those fund balances down by about $182,000 compared to the prior year end. Again, most of the decrease was in your lakefront improvement fund, and the street improvement fund, that was offset somewhat by an increase in your assignments for parks and trails. That parks and trails increase was partially caused or mainly caused by a transfer from your general fund of some excess fund balance, so that can offset the spend down in some of those other funds. And then that unassigned fund balance, which is available for any purpose, of about $4.6 million, that went up by about $472,000, and that's mainly the fund balance in your general fund that's not restricted for anything else.
I have a question on this topic. I think it's an appropriate time to ask it. It might be for Ms. Jaeger, but there's a note on page 171 of our packet, six, page six of your narrative, that talks about a year-end 61.1% of general fund reserves or balance. Is that a point in time? Because do we not have a policy that guides fund balance for each fund? And what is that target number? And are we hovering a blow it, or is this just sort of anomaly because it was at a point in time at year end?
Yes, the financial statements are as of December 30.
six, page six of your narrative, that talks about a year-end 61.1% of general fund reserves or balance. Is that a point in time? Because do we not have a policy that guides fund balance for each fund? And what is that target number? And are we hovering a blow it, or is this just sort of anomaly because it was at a point in time at year end?
Yes, the financial statements are as of December 31st. And that, I believe, the percentage you're talking about includes all fund balances of the general fund, including the non-spendable.
Okay, well, so remind me, just from my own education, the, we have an investment policy and a guidance on fund balance. Can you just remind me what the target is for our funds, for reserves?
Sure, so the fund balance target for our general fund is pretty simple. It's a 40% target, and we assess that after the audit is complete.
Okay.
So once we do this work, like typically, as has been our practice, our fund balance is above that target, and then in June or July, the council takes action to basically reallocate that and put it back at that 40%.
And then just again, for education, what are the target reserves for the other funds?
Sure, so they're not a strict percentage base. They're based on having, for our liquor fund, our marina fund, and those two are the most similar. We say that it needs to be at least one month of the next year's operational budget and add on any debt payments for the next year and the average annual capital over the next 10 years.
You did a marvelous job anticipating why I asked the question, which is, when do you rebalance? Thank you.
All right, then I'm going to move along, and I'm going to drill down within those governmental funds. As you just discussed, your general fund, the city's primary operating fund. This graph shows kind of a snapshot of your financial position over the last five year ends in terms of your fund balances and total cash balance at the end of the year. So at the end of 2024, you had about $5.1 million in cash in the general fund and about $4.9 million in total fund balances. The fund balance increase was about $515,000, and you'd actually budgeted break even. So your ending fund balance, so of December 31st, 2024, was about $515,000 higher than projected in your final budget. Most of that variance came on the revenue side. You took in revenues of about $8.8 million in the general fund in 2024. That was $618,000, or roughly 7.5% higher than your budget. Most of that was in two areas, as shown here, licenses and permits were about $167,000 over budget, mainly in building permits because the development in the city was higher than anticipated. And then within those other revenues, there's kind of two things in there. Other revenues were about $383,000 over budget in total. The biggest part of that is your investment earnings, which were about $227,000 over budget. Couple of things there, one, you budget conservatively, because that's really been volatile the last few years. And second, that does include marking your investment portfolio to fair value, so not all of that is realized gain, some of that is still sitting in your investment portfolio. The other thing that drove those other revenues up, your contributions and donations were about $150,000 higher than projected in your budget as well. On the expenditure side, you spent just over $8 million in the general fund in 2024. You were about $255,000 under budget, roughly 3%. If you can see the lines on there clear enough, you were essentially under budget in every area except for the kind of all other miscellaneous expenditures. Some of the larger variances are under spending. In general government, you were under budget in assessing and government building maintenance. In public works, you were under budget in engineering and personnel costs in the street department. And culture and recreation was also under budget in salaries and benefits. Due to the positive variances, both having revenues higher than budget and expenditures lower than budget, you transferred out about $466,000 more than you had projected, and I believe this is the rebalancing that you're referring to. So that's probably from the excess at the end of 2023 that you budgeted to transfer, or by policy, you transferred out more to your mainly park and trail improvement fund, and that was that increase we talked about when we were looking at fund balances. And the other type of fund that the city maintains are enterprise funds. These are your funds that are accounted for on full accrual basis. Essentially, they're run more like a business where your revenues that you're generating by operating these are intended to cover the full cost, including the capitalization of those operations. So you've got four utility-type funds, water, sewer, stormwater, solid waste. And then you've also got the licensing DMV fund, the on-off sale liquor fund, and your marina fund, which you started in 2023. Essentially, all of your funds had good years this year. Your total enterprise fund net position went up by about $759,000 from operations. That $595,000 you see there was net of that reduction of about $164,000 to beginning net position because of that change in accounting principle for compensated absences. Because these funds are full accrual, that gets recorded in these funds where it doesn't in your governmental funds. Does that make sense?
I have one question. I don't know if it's better for you or a city manager, but I'm kind of curious, how can we have a negative balance for licensing?
I'm, if you, give me one minute, hopefully I can answer that for you.
Okay.
So basically, all of your funds had positive operating income before contributions and transfers out. The reason that you're seeing reductions in your net position for licensing and liquor is because of the transfers out that you transferred to other city funds, to your governmental funds. So you transferred almost $1 million out of your enterprise funds over to governmental funds. About a third of that was to the general fund for operating support, and then the rest was basically primarily capital to your parks and trails fund, other capital, public safety. So the operations were positive, but your net position went down because you transferred out.
And if I could add on to that specifically in licensing, since net position is a statement of assets over liabilities, specifically in our licensing fund, we have almost no assets. So the only thing we do report in terms of liabilities, we carry a lot in terms of like, related to staff and compensated absences and things like that. So again, operationally, we're not running in a poor direction, but when you compare the liability that we have to record on the books, basically related to our staffing, and it's not offset, like many of these other enterprises do have significant assets. So that's a big difference there.
Okay, that answers it, thank you.
Then just one other thing for context. What he's referring to is, in his essence, the excess fund transfer allocation that occurs at some point later in the year, and then that gets caught up, and that's reflecting the previous year's net excess fund transfer.
Right, yeah, we're always kind of a year behind.
Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure I understood, thank you. Good question.
And just briefly, I'll drill down to one of the, one of the funds here, which is kind of unique, and that's your liquor fund. You have both the bar and grill and liquor store operation, which is fairly unique amongst our clients anywhere, where we have both on and off sale. Gross sales in that fund were about $7.1 million for the year, pretty stable. It was down about a half a percent from the year before. About 53% of your revenue, gross revenue, comes from the bar and grill side. That was about $3.8 million, and that's where the decrease was. That was down about $39,000 compared to the year before. The liquor store side of that, which makes up about 47% of revenue, was about $3.3 million, and that was pretty close to last year, about $2,000 higher than 2023 gross revenues. You did have total gross profits of about $3.6 million after cost of goods sold, operating income of about $295,000 after your costs. And as I mentioned here, you transferred out $545,000 for both general fund support and parks and trails mainly. So that's why you're seeing that decrease in your total net position in this fund.
This is sort of a wonky fund accounting question, since it doesn't really follow GAAP accounting from a traditional P and L perspective. If you were to try to normalize that to be a true net income, would you not include the transfer out as part of profit?
It is part of your change in that position, it's a little bit of.
I know fund accounting is different, but the reason I'm asking the question is you want to try to sort of normalize what the net income might look like. I understand it's fund accounting and it's not equivalent, but it's a representative measure of, is it generating cash flow? Is it producing profit? Is it producing? So I guess my question is, you don't have to answer this from an audit perspective, but is that $295 included or excluded with the transfer?
So the $295 operating income is prior to transfers. And the reason that it's set up that way, I guess in my opinion, is to make it more comparable to a for-profit liquor store. Because at a typical liquor operation, you're not going to be transferring your excess profits.
No, you're going to put it back in the business.
Right.
Yep.
So that, that is fairly comparable. You just have more kind of below-the-line stuff happening.
That makes, that answers my question, thank you.
Sure. All right, then, the last table I have to share with you. This is actually a very condensed version of the first financial statement you'll find in your, in your overall financial statement, and this is the entity-wide statement and net position. So this takes all of the fund information that we just went through, puts them both on a full accrual basis. So your business-type activities, you'll see there, that's basically dollar-for-dollar the same thing we just talked about in your enterprise funds, because those are full accrual. Where you see the changes in that top third, your governmental activities. In those funds, you're not reporting your long-term assets. You're not reporting your long-term liabilities for bonds you have outstanding or those long-term, long-term employee compensated absences, pension liabilities. So this puts it all together kind of in a single presentation. So the total net position for the primary government, the city, is about $78.9 million at the end of the year, was an increase of about $2 million. We talked about basically the same information for the business-type activities already. I'll just point out kind of the change that you're seeing in the governmental activities was mainly in your net investment and capital assets, and that was because you were financing a lot of capital improvements, particularly to your lakefront improvement project, funds that you had without issuing more debt. You did do a refunding to replace the temporary bonds that you issued with long-term tax increment financing bonds during the year, but that really wasn't one that you did to, usually refundings are done to get a lower interest rate. This was something you had planned because you issued temporary bonds in the first place. And then just briefly, the third, last third of this presentation shows your HRA. Because of the way that is legally formed, it is referred to as a discreetly presented component unit. So it still gets rolled up into your report, but because of the way it's controlled, it is not rolled into the primary government, the city, as reported separately. So you'll see fund statements in the back of your report related to that, and this is reported in a separate column on your entity-wide statements. You have about $2.2 million in total net position in your HRA funds. Most of that is your investment in capital assets, so about $2.1 million. That net position did improve by about $153,000, and that's mainly your taking in tax increments, paying for improvements. There have been some pretty significant transfers out of those HRA funds to help finance that lakefront improvement project. So that's what was going on with kind of that last third of the presentation there. That's all I had intended to cover from a number standpoint, unless there are questions or if you have anything else that you wanted to call out that I did not.
Questions of Mr. Lauer at this point. Hearing none, so now you get to give us the, you know, what's the rendering of your opinion? Right, you have, you have an opinion that has one, one open item, which is segregation of duties?
Correct, yes. I think from a compliance standpoint, it was a clean audit. There were no compliance findings, either in financial reporting or legal compliance, just a segregation of duties, and essentially that's just letting you know that because of the size of your business office staff, you're kind of placing more trust in fewer individuals than you might if you were a larger.
I do have a question related to that from Ms. Jaeger. You know, we had a retirement. You rehired a position, but my understanding is you rehired it under a different job definition. Is that a fair characterization?
Yes, that's a fair char.
Do we have any hope that, that additional definition of that role might remove? I mean, you can't answer this until you look at it, but is, is there any chance? In the 17 years I've been doing this, we've had an audit opinion of segregation of duties all 17 years that I've been studying this. Is it possible, is it potentially something we could address, or?
Yeah, Bill, is it possible? Well, just jokingly, I can say we did talk about it during the audit, and in May was when we hired our accountant. So that was the first time the city had two dedicated finance folks, but we only had that from May through the end of September when the retirement happened. So there is a significant portion of the year where we did not have two finance.
Probably not for 25.
So we'll see if there's enough kind of dual roles in 2025, but we're hoping, we're striving for that.
I love your enthusiasm.
I should point out also, there's different levels of this finding, and it's probably been 10 years or so ago. It was reduced from material weakness, which was the highest level, to a significant deficiency. I know it's counting speak, but it is.
That's bad.
It is a lower level of finding. So it has been reduced once, and so if you get to the point where you.
It's not like the United States losing AAA bond rating, is it? No, just kidding.
So.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Lauer?
I have no questions, but I would like to make a comment for the benefit of our viewing audience here and on TV. Is, this report is about as good as it could possibly be, and that is a reflection of you all here in the staff. It, essentially, that, the one tiny thing is something you couldn't possibly have addressed, and it's been known for many years. So as far as I'm concerned, this was a perfect audit, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. May I say something too, Mayor? When Kathy retired last year, I was a little nervous for you guys. And bravo to Erin and you, Aurora, too, for making sure she's up to speed and really well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lauer.
And you too, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aurora, and other staff members that contributed to this. So with that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Consider Adoption Resolution 142025 Approving a Conditional Use Permit Amendment and Design Deviation for 1221 Wayzata Boulevard East, otherwise known and operating as the Retreat. So I would turn that over to.
Mr. Mayor, one small thing.
Yeah. We have to move in.
Would you mind take a motion to accept those financials?
I forgot we do need to do that. Okay, so backing up, we're going to go back to the previous acceptance of the city audited financial reports. Didn't know I needed a motion, but I would accept a motion to accept the audit report.
Make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, that's accepted. Now we're on to item B, which is Resolution 1425. I won't repeat it because it was already in the record, and I will turn it over to staff to start this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and consultant planner Zwaiber is going to walk us through this presentation.
Okay.
Thank you, city manager, mayor, and council. We are here to consider a conditional use permit amendment and a design deviation for the retreat, which is located at 1221 Wayzata Boulevard East. So here is both the zoning and land use. Zoning is on our left, land use is on our right. It is a property that is zoned institutional. It is a property that is guided institutional public, a recovery center like the retreat is permitted use within, or conditional use, sorry, within those zoning districts. So existing conditions for people that are not as aware of this property, what are the surrounding properties? This property is actually surrounded by the Big Woods, and as a part of that, there is an easement from the Minnesota Land Trust, and I will discuss that a little bit further in the application. To, directly to the west is Colonial Square. Kind of to the northwest is Wayzata Woods Apartments. To the north and east is Highway 12, and then Commercial to the south. Here's a picture from Wayzata Boulevard. There is the sign there at Wayzata Boulevard indicating the property. You see the entrance driveway, and only because this is kind of a leaf-off position, you can see in the very background the beginning of the buildings. So it's a very secluded property or building within this property. So the development application is for a P, or CUP amendment to upgrade the west wing facing the north of the property. So when you look at the rendering on the bottom, it's that middle kind of tutel. So, when you look at the rendering on the bottom, it's that middle kind of Tudor-looking projection. And then, secondly, it's a design deviation to support mechanical equipment located on the proposed roof. And we'll get into more detail as I go through the presentation. But just to go through the previous approvals, how the Retreat got to be, where it's located. The original approval was in 2003. That allowed 70 units in the main building, and another 10 units in the sober living residence to the east. And when we get to the site plan, I'll point out those two different structures. In 2006, there was a CUP amendment to demolish the sober living residence and reconstruct that. And then, it increased, well, it actually decreased the occupancy in the main building to 62, but increased the living to 18. And then, back in 2018, they came in for an amendment to demolish the women's recovery wing and reconstruct in the same location. That is on the opposite side, on the south side of the building, in line with the men's wing. But as a part of that, it increased the total residents from 80 residents to 91. So, those are the three, the original CUP, and then the two amendments to get to where we are today with this new request. So, this property is about 7.44 acres in size. It consists of the 37,000-square-foot main building, which is highlighted in yellow there, and then the separate sober living residence, which is in green on the east side of the facility. You see that there is a, well, it doesn't come, maybe jump out at you, but that sober living residence has an access essentially behind where the car wash and the Holiday Gas Station is. So, they have their own entrance compared to this main building that the CUP amendment is highlighted in red, is asking for, that has its access off of Wayzata Boulevard and then the parking lot to the west of that main building. So, here's kind of a blow-up of the site plan. So, again, access off of Wayzata Boulevard, parking to the southwest. The main building is in gray, and then the areas in white is what the proposed addition will be. And in my next slide, I'll highlight that addition. So, the area that's kind of in that tan color, that is the wing that will be removed, and then the new wing that will be added on, essentially in the same location. Well, it is in the same location, essentially with the same footprint. Shown in blue is the area to the south of that wing is currently only two stories. The wing itself is three stories. So, they're proposing to fill in that area with a third story to the south of the men's wing. The green and brown are outside features. The green is a deck that comes off the main level of the west wing. And the brown is a patio that actually comes off the lower level of the wing. So, essentially, in this area, the grade drops as you head north. So, it's essentially a walkout addition. So, regarding setbacks for institutional zoning, essentially in every direction, front, side, rear, it's a 50-foot setback requirement. The closest happens to be from the south side of the, where the women's wing is, is that's 53.8. The east side, we put an NA, because there is the separate sober living building that is located there. To the west, Colonial Square, essentially, it's 109 feet. And then, this wing, with its addition, the setback would be 90.8 feet from the property line. So, they are compliant with all the property line setbacks. Here's a rendering just of the proposed new wing. Looking at the top photo, the part to the farthest left, that is that third-story addition. So, there's already two stories, they're putting a third story on top. And then, you'll see the three-story addition with essentially that ground level becoming open at the north end. And then, the bottom image is looking at that north end. So, you can see the windows and the door at that lower level, and then the three stories. In the institutional zoning district, you are allowed three stories and 40 feet, which is less. They're proposing a three-story building that is 36 feet, 7 inches in height. So, their height complies with the institutional zoning requirements. So, kind of the question of why are we here today? In the original CUP, there is a condition that states that material changes to the exterior of the principal buildings on this property, including building additions, shall require a conditional use permit amendment. So, because of that original conditional use permit having this condition, they need to come before you for an amendment to the conditional use permit. So, what they're proposing is to upgrade that west wing, which requires the amendment, but they are not requesting a change from that 2018 approval of 91 residents. So, same amount of residents before and after. As I stated before, there is a conservation easement from the Minnesota Land Trust over both the city-owned Big Woods property and this Retreat property. The applicant had sent the proposed plans to Minnesota Land Trust, and included in your packet is the Minnesota Land Trust conditional letter of approval for the proposed addition. Regarding parking, there are no proposed changes to the parking on-site. Again, they are not proposing any changes to the number of residents. They are providing 52 spaces of parking, so staff is not recommending any changes due to no increase in the amount of residents as a part of this CUP amendment. Okay, talking about tree preservation, there was an event that happened, or a request from our city forester, maybe is more appropriate to speak. But at the planning commission, the packet, or the plans that were proposed at that time did not show any significant or heritage tree removal. They were still going to plant five additional trees, but there was no additional tree removal. The city forester felt that the way construction activities would happen, he questioned if the two trees that are between the construction access, which is that tan area to the east and the wing itself, you know, would those two trees survive through construction? And Davy Tree performed that study and determined that it is unlikely that those two trees would survive during construction. So, they were removed. The one to the southwest, which is closest to the proposed building, is a dying tree. You know, the assessment showed that. So, that is exempt from the city's tree preservation ordinance. But the tree with the red circle there is a healthy 29 and 1/2-inch heritage sugar maple tree. So, the report does show that they need replacement for that 29.5-inch heritage sugar maple tree. Their landscape plan, which is shown here, they are proposing seven 3-inch red maples, three 3-inch Sienna Glen maples, five 3-inch common hackberry, and three 3-inch white oak. So, that totals up to, they're providing 60 inches. Because of the 29.5-inch tree removed, they're required to replace 59. They're providing 60. So, they meet the tree preservation. I just wanted to emphasize that, because that is a change from what we presented at the planning commission. So, the second request is the design deviation. So, they are taking some of their ground-mounted equipment and putting it on the roof. This is technically on the roof of the wing addition. The white area to the south or to the bottom of that red circle, that's that new third story for the main building, and then the rest of the wing to the north. So, you see that the gable roof of that main addition will provide screening from that mechanical equipment. Now, the other thing I'd point out is if this property would have been within the Wayzata Boulevard Design District, they could have mechanical equipment on the roof. This particular property, because of the Big Woods and its location, is actually within the bluff design district. So, if you look at the properties to the west, or the properties to the south, you know, Colonial Square or the Commercial along Wayzata, they would be allowed to have rooftop mechanical equipment. But again, because this is designated differently as bluff, they needed the design deviation. But they're showing they're providing the screening. So, even if you were on the property, it would be difficult to imagine that you could see the mechanical equipment. But definitely because of the distance from Wayzata Boulevard and the trees, nobody from outside this property is going to see any of this mechanical equipment. It's just a process, though. We need to go through this design deviation request. So, finally, the city engineer has reviewed this development, has no comments at this time. But the city engineer will be reviewing the building permits, some middle, and may provide additional comments at that time. As I stated earlier, with the revised tree report, the city forester is in agreement with that 60-inch replacement. And we have not received any public comments regarding this application. So, the planning commission did recommend approval of the CUP amendment and the rooftop mechanical equipment design deviation. And today, we are requesting that the city council consider the adoption of Resolution 142025 for the approval of the CUP amendment and rooftop mechanical equipment design deviation at 1221 Wayzata Boulevard East. And with that, I would stand for any questions you have.
Yeah, so questions of staff, and then we'll give the applicant a chance to comment after that if they wish to. Any questions of staff at this time? Hearing none. The applicant can make comments, not make comments, it's up to you. Certainly, the floor is yours.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is John Curtis. I'm the president-CEO of the Retreat. I live in St. Paul, so, sorry about that. You know, this, really what I want to say is just a statement of gratitude. This has been, the 22 years we've been on this property, has been, you know, probably one of the most special public-private partnerships I've ever experienced. I've worked for Hazleton for 20 years, and 27 years at the Retreat. It is an amazing story that accomplished a lot. We saved the Wayzata Big Woods. We addressed the density issues around this, you know, the other proposals that would have produced a lot more density of population. And we, you know, helped 33,000 men, women, families access a life of recovery from around the world. So, it's, you know, the people who come to the Retreat come from all around the world to get sober. And it is a lifesaving mission. And that the property, when people drive up to it, they are blown away by the, just the serenity, the beauty of the property. Our job is to, you know, to, when the nuns built the property in 1950, they weren't thinking about, you know, proper access and egresses and elevators and all of that, and then all the accoutrements that you need in new, more modern buildings. So, we're really taking a 1950s building and just bringing it up to, you know, a different standard and making it a much nicer facility. And, you know, we've been, each project we've had, we've been dedicated to, you know, keeping it architecturally sound, to make it look like it's always been there, to keep that Old English look to the property. And so, and Eric Reiners, our architect, has been working with the Retreat really from day one with us on all our projects and Inglesma Construction. So, they know us. They know what we like. I'm a little hard to work with at times, because I'm a very, you know, finicky about color, shape, and size. But we're a great team, we worked it well together. And, you know, we're here because of the city of Wayzata. You, we moved here from the old Pillsbury Gale family property, the Appleland Farm property, went to here on Highway 7, where we worked for six and a half years. So, yeah, it's, thank you. Thank you for considering it, and, you know, we're happy to be good stewards of the property.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Any questions of the applicant from council? Hearing none. There may be one that come up, but we'll bring it back for deliberation, and then we'll render our decision. So, bring it back to the council for discussion. Who would like to weigh in first about this application?
Sure, happy to go first, Mr. Mayor. I see no issues with this application whatsoever. I support the CUP amendment and the design deviation. I think it was really well thought out and done at the planning commission level incredibly well, so I feel very confident in that support. And I'd also like to extend our gratitude, remind you, to the Retreat, because it feels, it is a really special partnership, and it's felt that way from this side as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Who would like, Mr. Puckish?
Yep. I will say I have no problem with this either. Went, shout-out to the planning commission. They always do their homework, and they asked all the right questions, and I think they came to the right conclusion here. So, I don't need to reiterate that. But I would like to point out that there are many things about Wayzata that make it a very, very special place for this tiny community. The Retreat is right up there at the top. There's no other community I can think of that has a facility like that, that has a worldwide reach. So, thank you for being part of our community.
Thank you, Mr. Puckish. Mr. Parkill?
Thank you also. Thank you, planning commission. And I have no issues with this application.
Mr. Sorenson?
I'm Michael Ives, in favor of this resolution, and agree with everything that has been said.
I have nothing further to add, other than just one comment. I think it was the Arnos, was that the name of the family that originally built the house? It's truly amazing to me that it can go from an individual family home to a nunnery, a senical property, into a retreat, yet, to your point, the architectural intent of that structure is still there. And so, that's a huge compliment. I mean, a lot of times we hear that, well, we have to change this or do that, but you chose not to do that. And I just want to commend you for that, because the look and feel is exactly the way I remember the first time I walked into there, and around 2000. A lot has changed, thousands of people have been through those doors, but the building looks and feels the same. So, compliments to you for maintaining that integrity. And with that, I would bring it back to the council for any further questions of staff or the applicant. Otherwise, I'd move forward to accept a motion on this. So, are there any other questions, comments of staff or the applicant? Okay, so I would need a motion to adopt Resolution 142025, approving a CUP amendment and rooftop mechanical equipment design deviation. And Mr. Zweber, do we need to also reference the tree change that you talked about, or is that sort of part of the staff report?
Yes. We, the city attorney and myself and Alex talked about it. There is a condition within the resolution that they need to be in compliance with all codes and the plans that are attached. So, we're just noting and did that as a separate attachment, that revised landscape and tree preservation plan is a part of the overall.
Okay, so no specific reference to it?
No.
Okay, so with that, I would accept a motion from somebody to that effect.
Happy to do it. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Resolution 142025, approving a CUP amendment and rooftop mechanical equipment design deviation at 1221 Wayzata Boulevard East.
Thank you, Mr. Parkill. Do we have a second?
Second.
Molly, any further discussion? Hearing none. I would, I guess, move to approval, all in favor, say aye.
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 That passes unanimously. Congratulations, and good luck on your project. Okay. Next up on our agenda is Item C, I believe, which is Consider Adoption of Emergency Ordinance 850, amending Chapter 3...
850 amending Chapter 301 pertaining to traffic regulations requiring helmets or persons under the age of 18 on e-bikes, scooters, and bicycles. Sort of a hot topic in our little community, so over to you, interim chief Baker.
Mayor and council members, thank you very much. Jeff, are one of you going to run it for me?
We're going to bring you the clicker.
Okay.
If it fails, chief will just drive.
So I'm here to present to you today, considering the adoption of the emergency ordinance under 850 amending Chapter 301, traffic regulations requiring helmets for persons under the age of 18 on e-bikes, scooters, and bicycles. It worked, miracle. The background on this is, obviously, the PD has received several complaints about juveniles on motorized bikes, electric-assisted bicycles, riding bicycles and motor scooters. Over the past five years, this has increased significantly, as their use has become more and more popular among the youth, and they now can travel up to speeds over 30 miles an hour, excuse me. Safety concerns are of the most, most importance for both, not only the rider, but also oncoming pedestrians that are sharing the same space as them. Goals of this ordinance is to provide multi-model transportation, bike, scooters, that are growing rapidly in Wayzetta as its regional significance has grown, given the regional trail, the Dakota Regional Trail that meets up with the city. This enables the PD to provide educational opportunities and to be able to enforce and interact with persons under the age of 18. And this is consistent with other Lake Minnetonka area cities that have implemented an ordinance similar to what we are asking for tonight, and have had positive results and outcomes with it. Additional proactive steps that we have taken, we've increased more staffing between officers, CSOs, reserves, and overtime. TZD saturation, I started that early this year due to the weather, and now here we are back the other way. So very unpredictable, unfortunately, with the weather in the state of Minnesota. We have increased penalties, and we are still working on the gate on the Mill Street ramp. Here we go.
I'm going to go back one more time.
This is my, this is my technology. So I'm here to request, and staff recommends that you approve the preamble to adopt the emergency ordinance 850, amending the Chapter 301 pertaining to traffic regulations and requiring persons under the age of 18 to wear a helmet.
Questions of staff at this time from council? Go ahead, Mr. Pluckish.
Whoever's controlling, could you go back to slide number one?
I will try.
Let's see if this...
Technically, that is slide number one.
I think that's the slide I was looking for, right there. Okay, so if you read this here, it says that we want to amend Chapter 301 traffic regulations requiring helmets for persons under the age of 18 on e-bikes, scooters, and bicycles. Focusing in on bicycles, because I believe that the actual motion, or that we're proposing excludes bicycles. And I'm just curious, was that intentional, by accident, or what? Are we, are we looking to require helmets for people under 18 to also include bicycles or not?
Yeah, so we went back and forth regarding this with the, both the city manager, or, excuse me, not the city manager, the city attorney, David Schelzel, and also Jeff Lampert. And we landed on this language as far as all-encompassing. The bicycles are catchy, because they already have rules and regulations following that, and that's really not the end result of...
But I just want to be clear about it, because the introduction says one thing, but the language of the ordinance actually is a little bit different.
Right. So this, the bicycles probably should not be on here.
Okay, that was where I was confused. And for what it's worth, I'll make an editorial comment here. I am very much in favor of using helmets for all these things at all ages, including adults. I know people have freedom of choice, but I will tell you that I'm guessing 10 or 12 years ago, I personally had a near fatal bicycle accident, and will say that if I was not wearing a helmet on that occasion, I would likely be dead, or at least brain injured. It really saved my life. So for those of you out there that like the freedom, please wear a helmet.
Thank you.
Other questions of staff at this time?
I just have a quick question. What is TZD set?
Thank you.
Yes, so TZD stands for Towards Zero Deaths. It's an initiative through the state of Minnesota, obviously trying to get as the death involving car accidents and other accidents reduced to the lowest possibility. So that's what it stands for.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just real quick, just to clarify, so what, what is in the ordinance? The chief said it correctly. This is really just requiring helmets for motorized bikes and non-motorized bikes, because they're all bicycles, but non-motorized bikes would not be required for people that are under 18 to wear helmets. So I just want to be clear about that. And then it is an emergency ordinance, so it's a little bit different, that requires the reading of a preamble, or approval of the preamble. We figured that it didn't make sense to wait another few weeks to get this enacted as the busy season starts as soon as the sun comes out on Thursday.
Commissioner Dahl, you clarified about bicycles, so non-motorized bicycles are not included in this, but what about scooters? Because those are motorized and non-motorized as well.
Good point.
That is a good point. I believe it's motorized scooters, but the city attorney can confirm that.
Mayor and council member, that's correct, yeah. If you want to look at the exact language of the ordinance on page 338 of the packet, it's pretty brief, but the requirement falls on those under the age of 18 who are riding an electric-assisted bike or e-bike, motorized bicycle, or motorized foot scooter.
And those are the vehicles, for lack of a better word, that are going very fast because of the motors.
Got it. Thank you.
So I have to ask this question. So does state statute guide anything about bicycles, non-motorized?
Mr. Mayor, you know, we did look at state statute and what it covers. There is some redundancy for the motorized...
Yeah, that's not my question, I'm sorry. Where I'm going with it is, I was wondering, kind of following Mr. Pluckish's line of questioning, is there, put this aside for a second. This is fenced in to address a specific issue in our community. Is there any state guidance on helmet regulation period for juveniles?
It's, as far as I know, state law does not require helmets for underage riders.
All right, that's what I was looking for.
Is that your understanding, chief?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so if there are no other further questions, oh, please, Mr. Pluckish.
It's not really a question, but I thought of this after I'd spoken with the city manager earlier this afternoon. This ordinance is designed to address an issue, which is speeding these e-bikes and so on in the Lakewalk area, but have we thought of putting a speed limit sign on there for bikes and stuff?
So we have considered that. One of the issues with putting a speed limit sign regarding bicycles is they don't have a speedometer. Bicycles don't have a speedometer.
E-bikes do.
Some of them do, some of them don't. So that becomes an issue on how, how do you enforce how fast they're going when they don't know how fast they're going?
Well, this might be a topic for future issue, but I get that point. I, I'm a biker, and I don't have speedometers really on there, I just kind of bike, but just posting a speed limit will generally make people aware of the fact that there is a speed limit, whether they can measure it or not is another thing. I think these kids that are pezzing down the sidewalk at 30 miles per hour, they know they're going faster than, say, 15, or whatever the speed limit would be. I'm not suggesting we add that here, but maybe down the road, we think about it a little bit?
Or even some slow signs. Pedestrians, slow.
Slow down.
I have a related question, I don't intend humor from this, but is there a way to enact exhibition e-bike riding? And I'm not joking, because part of the issue that we have here is speed, it's not wearing safety, and then it is literally stunts, like, you know, riding on one wheel, not, you know, I mean, I don't intend humor, but I'm literally asking a question to the city attorney, to the chief. I mean, is, is there something along those lines? Because to Mr. Pluckish's point, the issue is speed, lack of attention, right? So if you're popping a wheelie, you're not going to see a stroller in front of you. And they do it all the time, they love it. What do they do? They press the throttle, they sit back, and they see how long they can ride on the back wheel. So it's not intended to be humor, is there something we could do there?
And a lot of times, those kids are wearing helmets.
Are they?
Yeah. No, I mean, so, I mean, it is good, but that means that we don't have really recourse. So I think this is a really great question, and I wanted to just...
I don't mean any humor by it, it's a real question.
I guess, in my opinion, that would be something I'd have to look into.
Yeah.
I haven't heard of, obviously, any other cities having that issue once they've adopted this type of ordinance, but that isn't something that's off the table, and I'm willing to look into that.
Okay, thank you for that.
We'll do that.
Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll bring it back for discussion. Oh, Mr. City Attorney, please.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make a note about the process here. The city manager referred to it a moment ago. We set this up as an emergency ordinance, so that would take effect right away, and these, you know, rather than having two readings that we normally have for ordinances over two council meetings, this will all take effect tonight, but it does require two votes. So if you get to that point, Mr. Mayor, the first vote I'd, or motion to ask for would just be to adopt and approve the preamble to the ordinance. That requires a four-fifths majority vote, and assuming that passes, then adopt the ordinance itself.
Okay. With that guidance, I would bring it back to the council for discussion.
I can start. I think this makes complete sense. I think it makes as much sense as seat belts make sense, and even people skiing these days, everybody wears a helmet. You don't even see somebody without a helmet skiing. And this makes, I see so many kids going so fast, and I'm concerned for their safety. And honestly, as a parent, this gives each parent an excuse to say, put on your helmet, because everybody wants the best for their kids. It's the law. It's not optional. It's not something you can sit there and negotiate with. So thank you for doing this.
Anyone else like to weigh in with any perspective?
I just have one comment, and it's, it's a comment to parents. If you're going to buy a kid a device that can go 30 miles an hour, please, please, please give them guidance to operate with respect in the city of Wayzetta, particularly in our downtown corridor. The whole reason that we're pushing this is because we have lack of respect. We have bad actors, we have speed, we have reckless, careless driving by juveniles and adults, and it needs to stop. And so my plea is to the parents that are buying these devices, to amplify, Mr. Parkill, please, 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 get your kid to operate it with respect and wear a helmet.
I have one more comment, because this haunts me. For the last two years, it haunts me. I nearly took a kid out, and if I hadn't, if I hadn't hesitated on the accelerator, I would have killed an eight-year-old kid. And he went by me with the biggest shit-eating grin that I've ever seen on his tiny little scooter, and I'm just like, oh my God, my life would have been ruined. So not only for the kid's sake, but for the poor adult or a poor person driving who wants to, you know, live the rest of their life without guilt or even not be in jail. Sorry, I'm a little passionate about that.
No, it's a serious matter. I appreciate the passion.
I tried to call the parent, and the parent never called me back, so...
No, it's a serious issue, so I'm glad of these comments, and I hope that the wide public maybe pays attention. And kids, you're welcome to be in town, you're welcome to ride your bike, you're welcome to buy, ride your e-bike, just do it with respect and within the rules. With that, I would accept two motions. The first motion is to adopt the preamble for the emergency ordinance for 850 pertaining to traffic regulations about helmets.
So the motion for the preamble.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion for the preamble.
You have a second?
Second.
Need further discussion? We need a four-fifth vote, so let's just do roll call, just to make sure the record's clear.
Good idea. Councilmember Parkill?
Aye.
Councilmember Pluckish?
Aye.
Councilmember McDonald?
Aye.
Councilmember Sorenson?
Aye.
Mayor Mullen?
Aye, that passes 5-0. Then I would second, I would accept a second motion, adopting the ordinance itself, which is ordinance 850.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Need further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote again, just for the record.
Councilmember Sorenson?
Aye.
Councilmember McDonald?
Aye.
Councilmember Pluckish?
Aye.
Councilmember Parkill?
Aye.
Mayor Mullen?
Aye, so that passes 5-0. Thank you very much, interim Baker and staff and city attorney. Next on our agenda is considering adoption of Resolution 1525, denying the side yard setback variance at 1617 Park Street East. I am turning this over to who, Mr. Dahl?
Mr. Mayor, consultant planners, we're going to walk us through this one as well, and we have community development director Sharp here to answer any questions, too.
Thank you. Mr. Zwieber?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. Yes, we are here to consider adoption of Resolution 152025, denying the side yard setback variance at 617 Park Street East. The owner is Robert and Jennifer Josette, Joezart, sorry, and applicant is Custom One Homes, the builder. So this property is zoned R3A. It is guided central core residential. You see, that block, all the other properties are that same zoning and land use guidance, and the properties in the blocks surrounding the majority of them are that same zoning and guidance. So here, we are showing the existing conditions of this particular property is located on the, well, the project north side of Park Street East between Walker Avenue and Broadway Avenue. We are showing the exhibit on the right, where kind of underneath all that line is, line work is the original plat, and then this particular lot includes all of one lot and a part of the lot to the west. So it's a little larger than most of the other lots on this block. Here's photos of the construction activity as it occurred last week, kind of showing two views here, because the one to the left shows the property to the east fairly well, and, and the distance between the house being built and that property to the east. The second photo shows some of those eaves and how there's eaves over the, essentially the garage and a little bit of living area, then the house actually bumps back in and then comes back out again on the northern part of the house. So the variance request itself is requesting variance to allow one additional foot over the maximum encroachment of two and a half feet into the east side yard. So a little explanation on how we got to where we are today. The image on the left is the survey, which shows that the, where the garage is located and the remaining portion of the house is at least 10 feet from the east property line, which is what the building setback requires. They do show a couple other things on that survey, such as areas where there's cantilevers, areas where there's a window well, et cetera. But on a separate plan sheet, there is the eaves. And so in the building plans, it shows the eaves on all sides, east, north, west, south, they're all three and a half feet. So what staff should have done is taken a look at these two separate plans together, and seeing that the east property line setback is 10 feet, the eve is three foot six, that is one foot further than the two and a half foot encroachment allowed under the city code. So to help try to explain this a little better, so what we have is the sides, the front being facing south, rear facing north, and then the east and west sides. For R3A, the building setbacks for the front and the rear are 20 feet, and then for the east are 10 feet for each the east and west. The building, as they proposed it, actually has a front setback of... The building, as they proposed it, actually has a front setback of 30 feet, so 10 feet farther than required by code. On the east side, it is 10 feet. On the west side, it is 12. So on the west side, it is two feet setback further than required by the code. And you could see, on the north side, it is quite a bit beyond the 20-foot required. So again, what we're looking at here is the eve encroachment. Because the front setback is 10 feet beyond what's required, that three and a half foot eve does not encroach into the side yard at all. But on the east, since that's right at the property line, that three and a half foot eve encroaches three and a half feet into the east side yard. There happens to be some encroachment into the west side yard, but that's one and a half feet where the code allows two and a half. And then again, because of that large setback, there is no eve encroachment into the north. So we have the building setback itself. The home meets those building setbacks. We have a code provision that says your eaves of the building and some other elements can be encroached into that side yard two and a half feet. So only the east eve violates that code provision and does it by one foot. The rest of the building is compliant. The engineering department has no comments in the proposal. We received two comments, and they were both emailed to you and provided at the DICE. The property owner to the east, which is the one that has the encroachment, provided a letter in his statement in there that he reluctantly supports the variance, but states, you know, his reluctance that we have to be in this situation today. And then another resident opposes. So at the planning commission, well, the planning commission ultimately voted to approve the EC report and recommendation that recommended denial of the side yard setback variance. And as I know all of you are aware, the planning commission process is a two-meeting process, where the first meeting, the planning commission votes to prepare a planning commission report and recommendation. At that meeting, it was recommended to deny, but it was a split vote of four voting for the denial, three voting against the denial. And so the action steps here, we are asking you to adopt resolution 1525, denying the side yard setback variance at 617 Park Street East. And the owner is here today that would like to speak to this item as well, but I withstand for any questions. Yeah?
Questions of staff, and then we'll give you a chance to comment if you wish. Questions of staff at this time? Go ahead, Mr. Parkill.
So was the original pad for the, the home shifted to the right one foot? Or why did they do 12 feet on the left and 10 feet on the right?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Parkill.
Solve this if we just go, you know?
Except it's already built.
Well, I know, but I'm just wondering if it got shifted when it got built, and that's what's caused part of this problem anyway.
Mayor Mullen, Councilmember Parkill, no. In fact, the house was shifted off of that western property line in large part to save a large tree on the western side of the home. You can actually see it in the photos if we were to go back. In the front of the house, there's a significant tree that you just see next to the portal restroom that was a focus of retention for this property owner and why the home was kind of shifted as far against that eastern property line as possible. So they were right up against their eastern property line for their setback and the foundation. The eaves themselves traditionally encroach in when you build a home on a smaller lot. You will see that throughout the neighborhood. However, when you do a larger custom home like this with significantly larger eaves than what code traditionally anticipates, that's where this issue came into play.
So this tree and up in the left corner?
That is correct.
Looks like it's in the front yard. What's that have to do with the shift? Did they didn't want the shade in the front window or something, or?
To retain that tree in its root zone, with the construction equipment, the putting in the foundation of the home, you would need to have a wide berth around that tree. You'll see actually tree protection around, or there has been tree protection around it, where you'd see how close that would actually get to the existing foundation and the construction of the home.
And, and that is actually on the exhibit on page 360 of your packet. The survey, they show what is the anticipated root zone and, and even with the house where it's located, what impacts. There's actually two trees that are saved.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there questions of staff?
Just speaking of trees, they have this, this one tree, but could you recap maybe what was taken out? I mean, I believe there were some trees on the other side of the lot that were removed.
I only know as much on the front one, but could we get page 360 of the?
Well, I walked the property today, and there was, I'm sure within appropriate, there were trees taken down for sure, because you can see the pots. Doesn't mean that's wrong, it's just.
There was a third tree in that southwest corner, and one of the three were removed, and the other two are showing to be retained. But you do see there with that drip line that even with the position of the house, those two trees have root impacts, but not so significantly that the code would require them to be counted as removed.
Further questions of staff?
I have one, and this isn't intended to assess blames, it's just trying to draw out the facts of how we got here. And this was consistent with the line of question that occurred in the planning commission, but there seems to be no evidence of nefarious action by the builder or the applicant. It seems like a miss. Is that a fair assessment, that it was a miss by the builder and it was missed by staff? Because you normally get to a structure being built to the level it's being built, and then it comes before a governing body like this after the fact and then says, oops, there was a miss. And again, I'm not intending to assess any blame, I'm trying to draw out the facts of process and approvals.
Thank you, Mayor. You are correct that this was a line of questioning at the planning commission. Ultimately, the discussion that the planning commission held, I think, was a very good one, in that, yes, this could have been caught during the initial permit review. Staff fully admits that that occurs from time to time, particularly in the odd case of a three and a half foot eve. Traditionally, eaves are around 18 inches. Two and a half feet is actually a pretty exceptional eve amount. Three and a half feet is an architectural element and design element to a home. So easy to see where that can occur, because the survey was submitted correctly, and this is a unique circumstance for a unique home. Zero evidence from the developer that there was a nefarious desire, but certainly, they are responsible for submitting correct plans in the same manner that staff is responsible for.
And again, I'm not trying to blame anybody, I'm just trying to draw out the facts.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you for answering that question. Any further questions of staff? Would the applicant like to make any comments? You're welcome to, you don't have to. You're welcome here, and we would appreciate your input.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council, and staff. First, I want to apologize, I should introduce myself. I'm Bob Josart, Robert. My mom is mad at me, but otherwise, Bob. Formerly of 22, 20, 2022 Portico and Wayzata, currently 2454 Crown Hill Road in Minnetaka, and coming hopefully back in August to Wayzata. The first thing I'd like to do is apologize to the mayor, to the planning commission, and to the council for all the time spent on this one foot that should have never happened. We never intended to this happen. The original plan, my wife and I approved and fit on this lot completely in compliance. It was supposed to be one foot farther to the west. It was. And to this day, I still don't know why I'm sitting on that east lot line. I don't have an explanation. Alex has got one there that I haven't heard until tonight, so. I, you know, to me, part of it was the survey remained a mistake, but certainly, the house was never intended to be on that lot line. It was in fact intended to be one foot farther to the west, so in fact, we would be in complete compliance. So I apologize. We shouldn't, we just shouldn't be here. I really did do that. I think we had a pretty good presentation here, so I can skip some of my comments, but I want everyone to understand what we were up to here. That's a large and different home in that neighborhood for sure, and I asked the architect, David Charles Architect, to give us a home that complimented the neighborhood, but yet was unique to the neighborhood and was respectful of my neighbors. It's a unique lot. We have two neighbors in the, in that distance on the west side, and I have one neighbor on the right. And so the 30-foot setback comes to line up with the two neighbors in the front, and then we tried to push the house forward a little bit, so we were lined up with the back of Sarah, the, the west neighbor, her house on that.
Randolph, yep.
Yep. So that's why the house got kind of wide, and I'm not, I'm not 28 anymore. I'm looking for a single-level living, so we dropped that down. When we did that, we also didn't want to have, because we didn't need to have the straight-up two-story walls. We realized that we could step the house back on both sides and give us some room from our neighbors, and I think if you drive by the site, you can see that, that we're not, it's actually much less tight to our neighbors than many of the other homes on that very street.
Talking about a massing.
Yeah, the mass. It actually walks away from the neighbors, and there's a fair amount of open air on both sides of the home. So I, you know, I think we accomplished that until a location thing happened. I got to again apologize, our, our presentation by the builder at the planning commission meeting was less than stellar and very confusing at times. I was confused at times about what he was trying to explain, so we got off on some tangents on there. I want to be clear about one thing, that, that home as submitted is 100% code compliant. If we weren't code compliant, we'd be moving the home, but we are code compliant. We are not compliant with your building ordinance, the eve setback requirement. And that's where we run into the, the issue. Our request, I think, is relatively reasonable, if you consider it. You know, I think we're in harmony with the neighborhood. There was no intent to be, and, and our request, you know, I like to, I like to hold up, we're asking for 12 inches, that much of eve setback, 10 feet in the air on a portion of the east side of the house. Not all of the east eaves are encroaching, just the garages and a little bit of the part that, and then a little porch in the back. I think, you know, that's intended for the ordinance. I think that meets our intent, meets the ordinance, we just missed, missed that by a little bit. I think the plight of the landowner is an interesting one for us, and I think I explained a little bit of how unique that property is to that block. It is the biggest lot on the block, and it is the only one that affords us the opportunity that we presented, and I, you know, we wanted to do that. I still think it's not my fault that we are where we are. I think this foot to the east got, happened without our knowledge. I mean, I was, I'm a snowbird, I'm in Arizona when I got the phone call. I was more surprised than anybody that all of a sudden, we're not in the right place. I said, what do you mean? The last time I signed off on these drawings, this house was fit on that lot according to all the ordinances and all the codes, so I am a little crazy about how I got there. The other requirement here, variance is granted, will not alter the essential character of locality. Boy, that's a pretty nebulous statement. So I, I don't know how to answer that, but I'm going to try to enlist my three neighbors. I think that they're my best help to answer that. There's an intent of all of us to live in that neighborhood together. I've had long conversations with my neighbors to the east, my neighbors to the west, and my neighbor to the south, the one that has to look at every day. Universally, all three like the design of the home, they're anxious to see it done. All three of them want this variance approved, and all three of them are quite puzzled and apologetic that it hasn't been approved. So they are all wondering, as am I, if these three people, the most impacted by a mile, are in favor of the variance, how are we having such, such a struggle here to get my little one foot approved? I don't deny, it's, it's not in compliance, that, that we understand. It's just a goof, and hey, it's construction, stuff happens in construction, and this is one of those deals. It's, it's a goof, and I'm sorry for it, and apologize for it, and we could sure use your help. I did allow construction to continue. I didn't want to drag out, so we put the roof on so we could start going on the inside, and we needed to do that, because when you're coming up that east side, our solution is going to require us to lob a foot up, but you still have to keep the shingle line and some of the other building lines in place, and the only way to do that is start at the bottom and come up, and then cut it off at that line. So we have a repair. You know, I think it goes from dorky or looked chopped to hideous, but we can, we can cut off that east side, one foot. It vastly alters the front elevation of the home. It really does. And I had a plan until last night that I was going to plant some taller trees on the east corner that would help hide that and make it a little more palatable, but my neighbor, Gareth, informed me last night that their porch would be, and their living room windows would be really impacted if I plant tall trees on that corner, because they get some really nice west sun. And so I committed to him last night, not, I'm not going to plant anything. So now I'm going to, now, if I don't get the variance, I'm going to look to my chopped, my chopped east side. But we can do it, and we're willing to do it if, if the council says this doesn't work for you.
Thank you for that presentation. Do we have any questions from council of the applicant? Thank you for your transparency, and thank you for being here. You know, this is a little bit of a wonky thing for us as well, so appreciate your transparency. I appreciate your transparency, Mr. Sharp, in holding accountability on both sides. That's a positive thing for me. So thank you for that. So I'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Mr. Plickish?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to start. First off, I'd like to say, Mr. Josart, Bob, I'm sorry you had to be here as well. Probably not as sorry as you are, but I'm still sorry for you. I'd like to start by making a bit of a philosophical comment, which is, the planning commission, by design, is supposed to be black and white. They're supposed to interpret code and make a judgment based on what's black and white. Council, on the other hand, is to exercise wisdom and judgment, which is a little bit different responsibility. In this case, the planning commission kind of did what it was supposed to do, but it was split. It was, you know, could have, one vote would have changed it the other way. What I will say now is that even though you could find fault on both sides, I personally hold the city staff to a much higher standard than I do the builders or certainly the homeowner. So if there had to be one side or the other, I would, I would go with that. And I do not believe that the homeowner should be put in a position to bear the brunt of a bad decision that was made, again, to which I hold the city more accountable. So I will, I don't know how we do this, because before us is to, is to vote for denial, but I actually want it the other way. I would vote for an approval of this variance.
Thank you, Mr. Plickish. Mr. Sorensen?
Yeah, I, I think the planning commission did a really nice job in kind of digging into this and asking all the right questions. It was analyzed and debated very well, and it was interesting, and it was a, pretty much a split vote. So you can, you could argue this thing either way, I, I think. You know, like someone mentioned, I mean, there was no malice here. I mean, it was an honest mistake. I appreciate the homeowner acknowledging that and his attitude towards, towards this. And, I mean, I was a custom home builder for seven years. I, I can't, I can't imagine what the fix would be that wouldn't, that, that would end up looking even kind of okay. I think if there was an easy fix, you know, we could maybe go there, but I don't see what it is. If you cut off a foot, you have a fascia board that's side, that's another eight or 10 inches higher than the rest of the house, and the transitions in the corner are going to be awkward, so I just don't, I just don't see where there's an easy fix here. You know, I think it is interesting that throughout this whole process, we have a letter that was shared with us just today. It's the first thing I've seen where someone objected to it. This was an individual on, on Broadway. The owner pointed out that the people most affected, people on the east and west and across the street are in favor of this variance, so it kind of makes you wonder, you know, what are, what are we, what are we doing here? And I would agree with some commentary of, of Councilman Plisik, that, you know, we create these ordinances and these, and these standards and regulations the best we can. You know, this is a unique situation, and we really need to, you know, in your terminology, you know, wisdom and judgment, mine was kind of, we need to be used practicality and what's reasonable as we look at something like, like this. So I just don't think it's, it is reasonable to tear into this house, which is, which is very well done, and it has symmetry to it. We did it on one side, I don't know how you not do it on the other. I would be. to it. We did it on one side. I don't know how you not do it on the other. I would be, I would not be in favor of denying this variance.
Who would like to go next?
I would, if I could.
Okay, please, Ms. McDonald.
Thank you. I've been looking at this slightly different than my colleagues up here that I've heard from thus far, which is how I'm reading these letters of support. All I hear is reluctance in them. And, these are my neighbors. I will be your neighbor, Mr. Josart, and this makes it very difficult for me, for all of us. This is a hard job up here, and sometimes, we have to make the hard decisions on behalf of the people who elected us, because your neighbors wanna be your, a good neighbor to you, and I don't, I don't blame them for wanting to get off on the right foot. This, prior to you moving in, I mean, you haven't moved in yet, but this is a, this is a very important neighborhood. This is a beautiful lot, the biggest in the neighborhood, and we have been studying the zoning in this neighborhood now for, for quite some time to make sure that rules are followed, the scale is, is appropriate with the neighborhood, and, and I don't see that the variance request is hitting all of those marks for me. I don't think this was due to the, to the circumstances of the land. I don't think economics is the right reason to support this, this request. So, I'm, I'm in the, on the other side of things here, where I just, I have a hard time saying it's okay for a variance when you had, have the biggest flattest yard and, and clear, you know, just scraped a house and started from scratch. Mistakes, oversights, yes, but that doesn't change the situation and the reality for me. So, I, I'm doing that, I'm saying those hard words out loud when I think your neighbors are just trying to be courteous, so.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Mr. Parkill?
First off, I want to thank Planning Commission for, I read through the whole thing, and you guys really spent some time on it, and I think it was a hard decision. I think it's something that's very difficult to make, and also, staff, accidents happen, things happen, you know, sometimes there is no blame, and you guys do the very best you can, and things happen. So, and thank you, Mr. Josart, for building a beautiful house and for suggesting a potential repair. It's a beautiful home. Symmetry is very important to me. I think that we live in a very complicated world, and a very expensive world, and a very regulation-intensive world. It's hard to always comply, and this is somewhat of a complicated and unfortunate situation, but I don't see any real harm done with allowing this variance. I think that, you know, you know, I, I, I respect what Councilmember McDonald is saying about the neighbor, because you did send some hesitancy in the neighbor to the east voice, doesn't wanna be a bad neighbor, but I think in this case, it's relatively minor, and hopefully things, and now he's not gonna have a tree to worry about. So, and there is precedent, precedent for us approving this variance, because there was a mistake done in Highcroft about a year or two ago, where they didn't account for the road to curve, and we would have had to take a corner, quarter of the, a corner of the garage off, and, you know, things happen. And so, I am in favor of approving this variance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Parkill. I'll try not to be duplicative. I did have a chance to talk to the neighbor to the east and to the west today. I had a long conversation with the neighbor to the east, and I had a very lengthy text message with the Randolphs to the west. I don't wanna speak for them. Mr. Elliott put in record his position in April, and I would say, from the text messages I exchanged with him today, their position is consistent. Are they frustrated with the homeowner? No. Are they frustrated with the city? Yes. Are they frustrated with the builder? Yes. And I would like to, I promised them that I would provide this feedback on the record, and it sounds like, I don't intend this other than just to relay, you know, the most impacted folks. They have found the developer, or your builder, to be tone deaf, to be lacking response, to not being a good neighbor in the way that they build, and how they park their cars, and a number of different complaints over time, and I don't think this is news to you. I promised them that I would center their feedback on where they felt it is most appropriate. So I'm putting that into the record. I would say it if your builder was sitting right here. The second thing that was interesting to me is, both of them emphatically said, "Please approve the variance." They do not want the project stopped. They do not want the project delayed. They were explicit. Do not, you know, get in the way of this. Approve the variance. The only suggestion, other suggestion that came from Gareth, and I'm offering it as a suggestion, I don't, I'm not gonna fall on this. He asked that I bring it up. One unknown to them is the drip line. I walked the property today in my, in my mud boots in, in the pouring rain, and the drip line, you know, does put a little gully there. I would say he's indifferent at this point, but I would encourage us, if, if the direction is to approve the variance, to potentially attach a condition, that the developer and the applicant would work with their neighbor, and if gutters and/or a catch basin is appropriate to protect erosion, runoff, I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting that it has to be there, but if that neighbor, you know, has impact from the eve and the drip line, you know, right on their property, that the applicant consider working with the neighbor to, to address it through a mutually acceptable solution. I'm not even gonna prescribe a gutter, because some people don't like gutters. It's not about that. It's about the drip line and the impact of water runoff on their property and their landscaping. So, that, those would be my comments. I think what's before us is, is a recommendation to deny. I'm hearing consensus that may not be the will of the council. So, I'm gonna ask the city attorney, I think we have a couple options here. We can, we can deny this and then request staff to bring something back different. We can, how would you like us to address this?
Sure, Mayor. Thank you. So, as you pointed out, we have a resolution before you, 15-2025, that would deny the variance based on the report and recommendation of the planning commission. So, you could take a vote on that, and if that vote fails, entertain a motion to direct staff to come back with an alternative resolution to approve the variance with findings based on the record here this evening that was articulated by the council, articulated by the applicant. We could also include that condition that you'd like to consider work with staff on articulating that and bring that back to you at the next meeting. So I guess, you know, unless you would think otherwise, I would probably start by just entertaining a motion on what's on the table. If that fails, then direct us to come back with an alternative resolution.
Are we, go ahead, Mr. Sorensen.
So, just a question. Is there a way to just get this dealt with all tonight?
Mayor and councilmember, I think there, there is. We generally don't like to do that because we wanna make sure that we've got a good, solid legal foundation of findings. We would have to spend some time actually writing those up now and working on the wording of that condition. So, and I don't get the sense that there's a significant delay or with the construction right now.
It's already built.
Yeah, and it's, sounds like the building continues on the interior. So I would rather take the time, get it right, make sure we capture, particularly if we're gonna have a condition, as the mayor has suggested.
And I don't know if there's support for that. I'm just passing along feedback, so just.
Sure.
That's for the council to decide. I'm just relaying what my conversation was with the neighbor. So. Okay, so with that, do we have any questions of staff or Mr. Shelso? Are we comfortable proceeding then? So I think the first step would be to accept a motion to approve this and see if that holds or fails.
Yes, that's right, Mr. Mayor. I think the resolution, or the potential motion is right in front of you.
Yeah, so I would accept a motion to approve the adoption resolution denying the sideyard setback variance at 617 Park Street.
Question?
Go ahead.
I have a question, because I get the sense of the council, too. If there's no second to this motion, does it fail?
Yeah, we don't, oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor and councilmember, yes, if no one seconds this, then, then you can't take action, and the mayor can enter, ask for a different motion.
Sure. I, I'm open to whichever way. Would anyone like to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Just to move this along, I'll second it. Any further discussion? So then let's just do a roll call vote, and again, to be very clear, the resolution on the table is actually denying the variance. So if you're going to vote yes, you are actually affirming the planning commission's recommendation, to be clear. If you vote no, we're gonna take a different step. With that, I would, I guess what's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? So now, let's just do a roll call vote, just so we can officially go through this and then take the next step.
Councilmember Plakish?
Nay.
Councilmember Sorensen?
Nay.
Councilmember McDonald?
Aye.
Councilmember Parkill?
Nay.
Mayor Mullen?
Nay. So that's a four to one denial of the recommendation to deny the variance.
Mr. Mayor, motion fails, yes.
So now, I would accept a motion to direct staff to prepare a approval of a variance to be brought back to us, and, and I would accept the motion with or without the suggestion of, of the neighbor. So.
How important are these findings there? I mean, seems like we could just get this off, get this guy moving forward.
Mayor and councilmember, as I said a moment ago, we, we could do that. Findings are essential legally to support action, and I think also to work out that condition. So if we, we have the time, my advice is to take the time, do it right, get a resolution that's in writing, that's in part of the record. I think that serves the applicant well, the landowner well. It serves council well and the city well to have findings of fact. We could do that on the fly. It's just gonna take some time. I'd have to work with staff in real time on that. We generally don't follow that process, unless there's a deadline issue.
So, it'll come back in two weeks, and we can approve or deny the resolution, the new resolution, and then is it, if we approve it, it's done?
It's granted.
Okay. Okay, with that guidance, I think what we're looking for, unless there's anyone that wants to, you know, maybe adjust the city attorney's recommendation process, is there anyone that would like to challenge that? It's okay if you do. Okay, we won't. So I would accept a motion to direct staff to bring back a resolution for approval of a variance at 617 Park Street East. And within that motion, if whoever's making that motion feels that, that the condition that I suggested is merited, please include that. If not, that's okay, too.
I'll make the motion to send the, this resolution back to the staff to come back with reasons to vote for approval, but without any conditions. Make it black and white.
Thank you, Mr. Plakish. Do you have a second?
I would second that with another comment. That would be, another way to deal with the amendment that you discussed, is to have the applicant come up and tell us how he would deal with that issue. It wouldn't be part of the resolution, I guess, but be another way to at least partially deal with it.
Okay. So I wanna, there's a motion on the table. I guess what I'd like to do from a process standpoint, Mr. Plakish, would you be okay just withdrawing your motion to Mr. Sorensen's suggestion? We wouldn't bring it back with an amendment, but we just allow the applicant in the record?
I don't think we need to. We can just proceed on the vote.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table. We still need a second?
He was a second. Second.
He said second with his suggested approval. So, do you want, are you okay with second without your recommendation?
I, yes, I am.
Okay, great. So you have a motion and second on the table. Any further discussion? So we'll just do, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that passes, so.
Nay.
Okay, well, I didn't hear, so.
Sorry, I thought you were gonna say it. That was opposed. My apologies.
Okay, so it's four to one. So what happens now is staff will prepare a new action step for us to come back to approve this with the variance. And thank you. That was a little bit of a sticky wicket. Thank you for everyone's patience, and thank you to the applicant. Now we'll move on to the next item, I believe is city manager's report. But before we get there, I just had one item that I wanted to bring into the record. You may or may have not noticed that DB Joan Cadre passed away recently. She was a longtime Wayzata resident, passed away peacefully on May 11th, 2025. The reason I'm bringing this up is she was, I think, would be considered a super volunteer at Public Works, widely known to our staff there, volunteered tirelessly for a decade or so at Public Works, and just wanted to recognize her passing. There will be a funeral service at 11:00 AM on Thursday, May 29th, at Redeemer Lutheran Church, for anyone that's interested in honoring DB Joan Cadre. With that, I would turn it over to the city manager for your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to add on to that, you know, volunteering is really about building community and working with your community members to, for the greater good of the community. She did that. She was a great, huge part of that, but she really added a lot of value for us at Public Works. Like, it was, it was free, really professional, helpful work in our office. So, to your point, Mr. Mayor, she'll be missed, and we're just grateful that she was around for so long.
Thank you, the city manager.
Two quick things. One is, want to highlight the festivities, the events going on on Memorial Day to honor our, all of our military who've served. Monday, May 26th, from 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM, excuse me, the Wayzata Legion will be conducting five different events. The ones specifically pertaining to Wayzata will start at 9:15. There'll be an honor guard ceremony at the Green Lawn Cemetery on Park Street and Wayzata Boulevard. Then they'll go over to the Old Wayzata Cemetery at Wayzata Boulevard and Walker Avenue at 9:45. Again, an honor guard and memorial ceremony there. After that, they'll head to Summit Hills Cemetery on the west side of town. Again, at 10:30, honor guard and memorial ceremony. Then lastly, they'll finish up at Heritage Park at the corner of Wayzata Boulevard and Central Avenue at 11:30. In addition to the honor guard and memorial ceremony, the commander of the legion will say a few words, then taps will be played, honor guard as well, with a three-gun salute, and then we will have our honorable mayor saying a few words there, too. So, weather looks good, so please, community, come out. We've got a variety of, of recognition events throughout the day on Memorial Day. If you have any questions, just go to our website. All the information's on there. The only last thing is, I just wanted to acknowledge Deputy City Manager Jaeger. It is her birthday today, so.
Oh, yay!
Happy birthday!
Birthday.
Should we sing?
I think we should either sing, or I don't know if she's got a few prepared words or anything.
What a great way to spend a birthday.
It would only have been better if you were still in the audit. All right. Are there any questions of city manager at this time? Okay. With that, then I would accept a motion to adjourn today's meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any, second with Mr. Plakish. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned.